You and Bob Carey.
I got 7:00 PM. I'll call the Leonardary Planning Board meeting to order for November 2nd, 2011. Just want to point out for everyone who is here, this room has two exits. They're on the right-hand side of the audience, front and the back of the room. We have to evacuate for whatever reason. We ask you to please proceed through the exit closest to you, go outside, and move away from the building. Don't come back into our fire department, as instructed everyone to do so. I'd like to ask for everyone to please rise and pledge allegiance to American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Scott's not going to be here tonight because I guess he's involved with business-related activities. And I haven't heard from Mary, so I'll appoint Letha to vote for Mary till she arrives. So, we have a quorum that gives a total of nine voting members.
Here's Mary.
Yeah, Mary is here, so you can't vote Letha.
Okay, sorry. I got power, so it was so hard to leave my house.
Oh, hey, congratulations.
Two minutes ago.
Let's hope for us, Dana.
I ain't holding my brats.
Yeah, we just started, Mary. Okay, our meeting's divided into two parts. This being the first Wednesday of the month. The second part is, we have two new plans to hear. And the first part is administrative board work, where we got our business done. So, we'll proceed to administrative board work. We've got two plans to sign, so go to the first one. This is Mill Pond subdivision, tax map 18, lot 13-97 and 98, Hunter Mill Way and Manta Mill Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this plan was conditionally approved back on September 7th, 2011. It was a request from Burke Hall Corporation, map 18 lot 13-97 and 99, for a 17-lot subdivision plan. Staff can report the notice of, the conditions of approval have been met and recommend signature of the plan.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mary.
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, show affirmative. And motion carries. Those plans will be signed at the conclusion of the meeting tonight. Second plan to sign is Clark Farms Industrial Center subdivision, tax map 17, lot 45, it's on Page Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this plan was conditionally approved back on Wednesday, July 6th, 2011. It was a request of the Evans Family Limited Partnership, map 17 lot 45, for a two-lot subdivision. Again, staff can report conditions of approval have been met and recommend signature of the plan.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mary.
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion? Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, show affirmative. And motion carries. And Clark Farms Industrial Center subdivision will be signed at the conclusion of the meeting tonight. We have an extension request, T-Mobile site plan, tax map 12, lot 34. This is at number 28 Kelly Road. They request a six-month extension of conditional approval to May 1st, 2012.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your package, you'll see there's a letter dated October 19th to Andre Guerin from Attorney Stephen Grill. And for the record, I'll read the letter into the, or I'll read the letter into the record. It says, "Dear Mr. Guerin, this will follow up on our telephone conversation regarding the above matter. As I mentioned, in April 2011, Planning Board granted a conditional use permit and approved the site plan proposed by T-Mobile USA with several conditions. The approval was then appealed to the Superior Court by an abutter. Superior Court has now dismissed the appeal. The time for the abutter to appeal to the New Hampshire Supreme Court runs out today, October 19th, 2011. On the assumption that the abutter will not appeal this matter to the Supreme Court, my client will be contacting you to set up a meeting to review the conditions of approval so that the final plan set can be certified and the building permit issued. In the interim, I note that one of the conditions in the Planning Board approval was satisfaction of all conditions of approval within six months. Because of the stay of all proceedings, which automatically went into effect upon the appeals of the Superior Court, it was not possible to demonstrate compliance with these conditions before now. Accordingly, we ask that the Planning Board grant an extension of an additional six months in order to make sure that all the conditions have been satisfied as set forth in the Planning Board decision. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Please let me know if you have any questions. Very truly yours, Stephen E. Grill." Again, staff has met with Attorney Grill, as well as representatives of American Tower, and understand the implications or the reason why they're asking for the extension, and staff is supportive of the extension request.
Okay. Yes.
Do we know if the abutter, I assume this, well, I mean, this reads as though it was done during the day on the 19th. Did they file?
No, I believe they have not.
So their, their ability to file is gone.
It's passed.
Yeah.
No, you just don't know if they filed. They wouldn't notify you.
But wouldn't they notify the T-Mobile?
Yeah, they could, yeah.
And wouldn't even mobile?
Not as of the 19th. They could have filed it on the 19th.
Right, but today's the, what, the 2nd of November?
Well, you talked to them today?
I think, again, all they're asking for is an extension.
When was the last time you talked to them, on the 19th?
Yeah. I can't even remember when we had met.
I thought we met with them last week.
It was following the 19th. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
To a microphone.
You wake up down the microphone and just identify yourself for our records, please.
Good evening. I'm David Bass. I'm in-house counsel at American Tower. And this is Chad Rumsey, who is also, works at American Tower, and who has been here throughout this zoning process. It is our understanding that an appeal was not filed as of the 19th. So, his ability to appeal has lapsed.
I just want to note, too, given that this is, this is a precaution, I believe, that American Mobile wants to make, just in case that, you know, this so to preserve their approval. I'm sure that the, I would say the case could be made regarding, given the appeal of the initial approval, has stayed the proceedings. Therefore, probably would extended their, I guess, their conditional approval beyond the six months that we had originally stated, but be on the safe side, we recommended that them submit, that they submit an extension so they can preserve their approval. Just in case an appeal did happen, they can still preserve their approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a six-month extension.
Second.
I have a motion by Dana, second by Rick. Any discussion by the board? Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, show affirmative. Motion carries, and the extension has been granted to May 1st, 2012.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next, we have regional impact determinations. We start the drum roll on this. Woodmont Commons, BUD master plan.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we're going to start with the two items that are on the agenda this evening, and the first one is map 15 lot 97, that's Louis B. Colty Jr. and Susan B. Colty. They had submitted their formal application. It's a two-lot subdivision for heritage truck and automotive. And staff recommends that the project is not a development of regional impact and does not meet any of the regional impact guidelines, as suggested by Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
Okay, we'll do that one first.
Okay.
Okay. All I need is a motion. So moved. Motion by Dana, second by Rick. So, it's a project of, it's not a regional impact.
Yeah.
That's where, any discussion by the board? Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, show affirmative. And Louis G. Colty Jr. and Susan B. Colty, tax map 15 lot 97, is not a regional impact.
Okay, thank you.
And we have Mark Hill Investments. Somehow I lost the right and my left-hand page, but I'll look. Okay, next one.
Okay. The next one on the agenda is map 28, lot 18-26. The applicant is Mark Hill Investments, Inc. The date submitted for formal application was October 14th, 2011. This is a two-phase site plan amendment to add silos, mechanical equipment pads, loading bays, a dockwell, and associated site improvements. Staff recommends that the project is not a development of regional impact and does not meet any of the regional impact guidelines suggested by Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we find tax map 28, lot 18-26, lot 18-26, not to be of a regional impact.
Second.
Okay, motion by Dana, second by Rick.
It's 18-6, not 26. I'm looking down here.
Okay, that's, that's the thing. Okay, so Mark Hill Investments Incorporated, tax map 28 lot 18-6. I need a discussion by the board. Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, show affirmative. And the Mark Hill Investments Incorporated, tax map 28 lot 18-6, is not a project of regional impact.
Now you can have your drum roll.
Okay, now the drum roll. This is Woodmont Commons, BUD master plan.
Okay.
Yep, you get the floor.
Thank you. Woodmont Commons, this is a planned unit development master plan. It involves map 10, lots 15, 23, 29C, 2A, 29C, 2B, 41, 41-1, 41-2, 42, 45, 46, 47, 48, 50, 52, 54-1, 57, 58, 59, and 62. The applicant is Pillsbury Realty Development, LLC. The date submitted is 10/14/11 for formal application. The staff recommends that this is a development of regional impact and does meet portions of the regional impact guidelines as suggested by Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. The project is directly adjacent to a municipal boundary, may create a new road or a point of access between the municipalities. It may generate 100 or more vehicle trips per day into the adjacent community, as determined by the most recently published version of the ITE Trip Generation Manual. Is a proposed development of 50 or more residential dwellings. A portion of the development is within 1,000 feet of a municipal boundary, and the project proposes the construction of commercial or industrial space that exceeds 100,000 square feet. Appropriate regional impact notices should be prepared and sent to the Town of Derry and Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, I just, why wouldn't we send one to Manchester as well? Doesn't it affect them?
I think Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission would advise us of that fairly quickly, because it's not near their border, the initial.
Part of the way the statute reads.
Okay.
But I think anyone who is in Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission knows.
Right.
Yeah, will know.
They will, and they will advise us, and we will notify them as.
They're just happens to be the closest abutter to this particular project.
Okay, Dana.
I'd like to make a motion that we find the planned unit development master plan for tax map 10, lots 15, 23, 29C-2A, 29C-2B, 41, 41-1, 41-2, 42, 45, 46, 48, 50, 52, 54-1, 57, 58, 59, and 62 to be of a regional development.
Second.
Okay, motion by Dana, second by Rick. Any discussion by the board? Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, show affirmative. And Woodmont Commons, BUD master plan is a project of regional impact, and that will go to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And I think everyone's well aware at this point, this is more of a formality, anyway. We have to do the statute. Okay, next, we have recommendations of the town council, appointment of alternate members to the Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, Deb Evans, Letha Riley, and Marty Surugus. And I guess, me, Margot, myself, we received emails from all three people. Deb Evans has served on there a number of years as alternate, and has a perfect attendance. I think everyone knows Letha. And I think most people probably know Marty, because Marty's on the Heritage Commission, he was on the Open Space Task Force, he's on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and he's attended a good number of our meetings here also.
And Mr. Chairman, he's the vice chair of the Master Plan Steering Committee as well.
Thank you. I guess the Rolodex try to go through.
Doing pretty well.
Look, are we, is there a number that we're appointing, or are all of these?
We have three regular members, and we're allowed up to three alternate members for each of the regular members. And this is part of the chart of the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. The appointment is for a year.
One year.
Yep. And that's from us, because there's nothing in the chart of Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission to determine that, and regular members, I think, is four, four years?
Five.
Five years, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend to the town, or make a motion to recommend to the town council that we appoint Deb Evans, Letha Riley, and Martin Strug.
Surugus.
Surugus, sorry. To the New Hampshire, Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
A motion by Mary, second by Dana. Any discussion by the board?
Just thank you very much for stepping up.
Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, show affirmative. And Deb Evans, Letha Riley, and Martin Surugus will go to the town council as being recommended on the Planning Board for appointment. Next, we have the approval and signing of minutes of October 12th, 2011.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dana. Any discussion? Sign none. All those in favor, approval of the minutes of October 12th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences?
Abstain.
Chris abstains, Dana abstains, because they're not present. Chair votes affirmative, and motion carries, and the minutes of October 12th are approved. And Lynn, I said Lynn, as official active or board secretary. Next, we have discussions with town staff. First thing we have is the master plan, RFP, and the survey. And Andre.
Mr. Chairman, more of an update to the master plan process. The RFP, the request for proposal for the, for the completion of our master plan, the comprehensive master plan, was issued at the beginning of October. November 4th is the due date for those RFPs to be doing, and hopefully we'll get a good showing with regard to that. The survey, the community survey associated with the comprehensive master plan, we had a subcommittee meeting, subcommittee of the master plan committee meet on October 11th to discuss the various, the three different proposals. And on the October 27th, right, 26th, October 26th, master plan committee, the recommendation from the subcommittee was brought to the committee, and the committee unanimously agreed to move forward with UNH Survey Center to perform the survey, community survey. And right now, we're, it was also suggested that we, we include, we include whoever we select as the consultant, we move forward with the master plan to be included in the preparation of the, of the survey as well, so. So we have some time to get that done.
Any questions? If we're, we'll proceed.
Yes, we are.
The Master Plan Steering Committee's been doing a lot of, a lot of works.
Yeah.
And I guess anything, for anything else on the Master Plan Steering Committee, if you have anything Letha to add?
Nothing at this time. Andre summarized it quite well.
Okay. And the next meeting is the last Wednesday of the month?
Yeah, well, actually.
Yeah, we, we were going up against Thanksgiving, so we, a regular master plan steering committee meeting will be the fourth Wednesday in December, the 28th. But we will use the November 30th date, which is the last, and I think fifth.
Wednesday, yeah.
Wednesday of November, so very confusing. We'll be using that as, as a subcommittee meeting to help make some selections with the, the RFP process.
Yeah.
So Letha, are the, are the subcommittee meetings broadcast? They haven't been to date, but of course, we're open to it if people would like.
Where do you have them?
We have them in the Edgemont Conference Room.
Elwood.
Elwood, I'm sorry.
Elwood Conference Room.
Yeah.
And, but again, if the board wants those, the subcommittees televised, we can do that?
Yeah.
They've been posted, I should say, they've been posted for, for hearing, it's just a matter of whether or not you want those televised. The main, obviously, the main master plan committee are, whether or not you want the subcommittees, and it's up to the board.
Minutes are taken for those meetings, but, you know, if that's something that the board would like us to, to explore, having those meetings televised, absolutely, we can, we can do that as well.
Yeah, I would try to have them televised as, as much as possible, because I mean, it's critical. You know, I don't, I don't know what the viewing audience will be, but there, I think if, even if someone's interested, it's, it's good to have it televised.
The only thing I would just caution, and maybe we can talk to our legal council, is that if we're reviewing the RFPs, that'll be one thing, but if we select one that we're actually negotiating a contract with, is that something that is televised, or is that something that obviously is protected by 91A to negotiate contracts?
I think the negotiation part would be one of the non-public.
Non-public section, yeah.
Items, I think it's five. Five reasons where you can go into non-public.
Yeah, I think that's one of them, yeah.
That is one of them, because during the negotiation, it could give someone in the public an unfair advantage over other people in the, in the public, so.
Then in that case, the November 30th date would be subject to.
Be subject to that non-public, you know, portion, maybe.
Yeah. So that would not be televised, then.
Right. Put something up on the screen while you're doing it.
Right, I mean, if you're talking about other things, and then you go into non-public, you know. I know it's difficult to get people to come and direct them, you know, let alone film them, but, you know, if it's possible. Is there a camera in there?
None in the Elwood, but there's one in Sunny Crest.
Yeah, we could arrange for a meeting room that had it, absolutely. Because how many people do you have on the subcommittee? On the RFP subcommittee, we have three, including myself, plus staff.
Yeah.
And then on the, I could be wrong, no, there's four, I'm sorry. We, an absence last night. And the subcommittee for the survey, the phone survey, we have four of us, including myself, plus town staff. So it's rather small, but, but workable, and we can most certainly make efforts to televise those, if you feel it's, it's appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, my basic way I operate is, is much public exposure as, as you can get, because it works, it works for you. But, you know, non-public, you could always do it at the end of the meeting or something, or you could do it at the beginning of the meeting, before the meeting starts. So, we'd have to have the, on the agenda that the meeting starts, let's say at 7:00 PM, be non-public, and then, you know, let's say 7:30 or something, you're, you know, all the other items on the agenda.
Okay.
Or sometimes, like what the council does, they'll start at 6:00 or something, and have non-public, and then at 7:00, their regular meeting time, they'll be through their, their non-public.
All right.
But it has to be on the agenda that you're going into, you know, your agenda, and also going into non-public, and the reason why you're going into non-public. And also, when you go into non-public, the reason why has to be stated, and has to be a roll call of every member.
All right.
Is this for negotiations for a contract with a external party?
Yeah, that's what I just want to mention, I mean, if.
You can't go into private, closed meeting for that subject. It's for contracts, for union contracts and stuff, employee things for 91A, you can't do that. So it'll have to be public.
You can, negotiations.
If it's a contract negotiation in the public for, for a contract, it can't go to a closed meeting.
It can.
Can't, yeah.
Cannot.
That's, I was just reading the statute.
No matter what language, no matter what accent, it's cannot.
No.
Thank you.
But I just want to compliment you on the fact that the minutes are up here, and even the draft minutes from the most recent meeting, that's awesome. That people do have, you know, an interest in it, they can look at those meetings. Yeah, we actually had a resident, forgive me, I don't have his name off the top of my head, but we had a resident after the first meeting request that we do that, and we were getting to that, we just hadn't done that. And so I was really pleased to see the, the public interest, at least from this one gentleman. So, thank you.
Yes, consideration of negotiation, pending claims or litigation, which has been threatened in writing, consideration of acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which is discussed in public with benefits of someone else, and which is discussed in public would adversely affect the reputation of any person, hiring any person as a public employee, dismissal promotion, and so forth, so.
You're reading 91A3?
A3.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So none of those ones would fall into the, what we're talking about?
Well, I think, not Roman numeral 2, subsection D.
E? Hiring any person as a public employee?
Claim or litigation?
I think that's.
Would really be a contract.
Litigation.
No, subsection D. Consideration of acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, likely benefit of.
That's usually the, if you're discussing anything, you're negotiating, is, you know, subparagraph D. Consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which is, and I think the clicker there is personal property, which is discussed in public, likely benefit of party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community.
Yeah, just basing it as a point, I was just looking through that, checking to make sure we were okay.
Yeah, yeah, because I know my selectmen council experience, if there was any negotiation, that would be because you're discussing, you know.
Personnel, yeah.
But I think there's another problem, though, who is, there's a purchasing policy for the town, for town employees now and volunteers. I think that has to be run through the assistant town manager. And it's my understanding that unless it's something like on a professional level, like an accountant or an expert or something like that, or an attorney, where you can do it with, outside of lowest bidder, based on their experience or something like that.
Yeah, they're quality-based.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe want to check with Sue Hickey.
Let me do that.
Yeah, probably review it with Dave and Jack, see what.
Whatever the policy is, we'll follow.
Right, right. Okay, we're all set with our, our master plan and survey. Okay, next, we're going to discuss third-party reviews per RSA 6764B regarding the Woodmont Commons master plan. In our, well, site plan and subdivision ordinance, we have third-party review. But whether we have that or not, it's covered by RSA 6764B, which gives the planning board the authority to conduct third-party reviews. Probably should do a read for the board.
Actually, I believe that's G, 674G. If I'm.
No, 676.
6764G.
Yeah, 4B. Because 4 is rather lengthy and does with, that deals with boards' procedures and flats. Yeah.
4.
Yeah, 4, 4A is pretty lengthy.
If I couldn't.
Okay, 4A. Okay, 4, 4B. 6764B, third-party review and inspection. A planning board reviewing a subdivision plat, site plan, or other land use application may require the applicant to reimburse the board for expenses reasonably incurred by obtaining third-party review and consultation during the review process. A planning board approval, this is approval, not review, of subdivision plat, site plan, or other land use application, may require the applicant to reimburse the board for expenses reasonably incurred, obtaining a third-party inspection during the construction. And I think what covers us is the other land use, because the PUD is certainly other land use. We've also, during the, our conceptual discussions with the applicant Pillsbury Realty Trust, we indicated that they would, you know, welcome a third-party review at a party of our choice, and that they would, would pay for it, so. One that's clear, direct. One, there's clear direction that the planning board is in the driver's seat on calling for a third-party review and for the planning board to determine the process of that third-party review. So the process is really going out for bid for the review. For the, and I think that would be for, you're looking for both the, accepting the application as complete, and also the master plan, the PUD review process.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, I heard that you said, do you want to put this out for bid, or do you want this to get estimates, to do this work?
Probably, I think the best thing, I think would keep, I think the fairest and the most open is a bidding process. And that's at the planning board's, you know, really the planning board's discretion, what it can do. And this would be irrespective of town policy, because the statute would trump the, anything in the town charter.
I'm just saying, if that's the case, then we have to put together bid documents.
Yes.
You know, and I could
That's understandable. And I think you can communicate with the applicant also if there's a timing issue and see where they withstand on it. But I think we should do our due diligence on this, I think the community expects it. And the expectation is a third-party review. And I think the most fair and open way is a bidding process. And just like with the master plan, for the consultant with the master plan steering committee. And I'm sure there's probably a good list of, probably outfits are involved with that. One name, I know I met this individual when we had the Shirets a year ago September, was Jeff Speck. And he has his own outfit. But I would look out and talk with other people, see what is there in the field.
Well, if we're developing bid documents, we can, if we know about these people, obviously, we can send a bid, but then we post it in the news, we, newspaper, and we post, much like we did with the master plan.
It should be posted publicly.
And hopefully, we can get responses within the timely fashion. And if we develop bid documents, I, I don't, I think we might be hard pressed to look to have this reviewed on December 14th.
It might be a little early, but it's something you can discuss with the applicant, that, and if the planning board, you know, I think everyone, I think if anyone disagrees, we shouldn't go out for bid, I mean, or speak up. But it should be, I think, a full and fair bidding process. And you can always let the applicant know, and I think the applicant would want to, you could bring that input back to the board also. I'm sure there's a, there's probably a timing issue, but I think we should err on the side of taking too long to make sure this is done properly.
Can I ask, how are you going to put out a bid when you have no parameter as to what the amount is going to be?
This is what needs to be developed, and I think the planning board could help also if they so desire, but I think it would be up to staff or working, you know.
Well, if we go for bid, I guess we're asking for a request for proposals, we're gonna, obviously, I document what we're looking for, and, and what the review will consist of, and then we will see proposals based on those parameters.
Think on ordinance for it, it would be, I think, the basic, the basic part of what's needed anyway. But I think, you know, seeing your expertise and Cynthia's, I think, would put something together.
But can I ask, what, what's the criteria for the qualifications for this third-party review? I mean, what's he reviewing, the traffic, the economic impact, all of this?
Basically, what, if I understand what the board is looking for, they're going to be making sure that the, the the information is, one, is submitted that is conforms with our performance, I mean, plan unit development ordinance. And from that point, to make sure that we have all the, you know, all the documentations, in sense of with the required information that's been submitted. And then from that point on, we'll assist the board in making sure that the concepts and the performance criteria within the plan unit development are being met throughout the process to obviously present the board with information, you can make an informed decision at the end.
So if I can understand this, I mean, we have an engineering firm now, I think it's Stan Tech, right? That does that on a site plan?
And I believe Stan Tech will, will still be out there to do the traffic review, to do the, review the drainage, and do those things that we typically relied upon the fore. But the, I believe we're going to rely on the, again, the board can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're going to rely on our consultant to make sure that the, the PUD concepts and the concepts that have been presented in the, in the master plan for this project are being met. And that all the required information with regard to that, you know, whether it be help with the land use plan, to make sure that the, that the, the way that land use plan is going to be carried out, the way, the way that the architectural part of those plan is going to be carried out in accordance with the plan unit development. So all those, I guess, planning and zoning concepts is what the applicant will help us with. The technical respect will be done by our
But is it, is it one of the criticisms or complaints by some people that the PUD application is rather vague? And then they come here and say, you can't expect us to have any kind of concrete plans, so we get the site plan applications? So are we going to basically hire a consultant to, for lack of a better term, review vague plant, vague concepts? Is that what we're doing here?
Not my impression, no. I think it's going to help us put, you know, put the, I guess, to put the formality into the plan unit development. If this is, if the concept that's been presented is such that it's going to result, it's going to result in X amount of residential, X amount of commercial, industrial, in a certain way, then what we're trying to do is fashion a plan to make sure that that certain way is carried out at the end. And that what the planning board approves is something it's going to bring about that master plan, which ultimately will come the zoning for that particular parcel.
Yeah, I think we need to work with someone who's really got expertise in this area, along with staff, because we're going to have a lot of questions, and I think we need to rely upon someone who is independent of the developer.
No, I agree with that, I'm just saying that if, if they've got the opportunity to change things after it's submitted, he's approving Plan A today, and then when he gets down to, you know, putting the shovel to the ground, it's Plan B. What good's the third-party review at that point?
I guess I don't follow you, you mean that at the end of the day, we, the planning board approves the plan?
I mean, I thought they kept saying, you know, you can't hold us to things, we might change things.
I'm sure that that's what they've said.
But we have to have an initial product to begin with, you know, before you start to change anything. You want to know what you have first, and then, and then you go from there. But I think from, you know, let's say we have a master plan, then we start to develop it. If there's, you know, changes, it certainly can be changed, but I think that consultant could probably help us through even some of the initial changes. But I think we've got to work with something first before we even think it changes, because otherwise, you get, the whole thing is uncontrolled. Basically, it's like an experiment, you want to have controls on it, so you know what's going to happen. When you change one thing, you want to know what the result coming out and what it's from. So let's not talk about change until we have, have something together.
Okay, I'm just saying, I, you know, I'd like, it seems a lot very vague to me, what we're, what we're asking third-party review for.
And then that's why we're going to come back with some bid documents, so the board can take a look at it and see, and make sure it matches. And I, from staff's point, we're going to make sure that the bid documents cover the very thing that we're, we're looking at. But, and I, and I kind of agree with Art, I think that we need to get the initial, the initial master plan down. Ultimately, the third-party review is going to come and help us fashion a master plan for this particular site. And then what we can also fashion within those, within that review is how changes take place within this. Because a lot of control falls on the, will fall within the planning board's purview, and therefore, if you want to set criteria by which change takes place, then let's make that criteria part of this plan.
Yeah, but my, my problem is this statute that Art's talking about says we can hold the applicant liable to reimburse the board for expenses reasonably incurred. You know, what does that mean? And when he starts coming up with something that I'm sure they're not going to be happy with, I think they're going to say that's unreasonable.
I think two gentlemen had their hands up, couldn't supply, when you come forward and to the microphone, and so folks at home can hear us and just identify yourself for records, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ari Pollock, I'm an attorney with Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell. I'm here tonight for the applicant, along with John Michael, who's another attorney who's familiar to the board and been working on the project for some time. We, I'm here to simply say that we agree with the process that's being described, both by the chairman and by Andre. We recognize the need for the town to hire a review firm or, or individual who will, in the first instance, opine for the board as to whether or not our submission meets with the requirements of the PUD ordinance itself. There are a discreet list of items that are required for submission. And as you have been discussing, the threshold inquiry is whether or not that material's been presented by us, the applicant. We certainly would like to have input in both the RFP as well as the individuals who are submitting proposals under the RFP. We understand it's not our decision to make, but we might be able to provide some valuable feedback in terms of who we believe is qualified to do the work, or who we believe is charging a reasonable rate. So that when we get to the end of the day, as you're suggesting, and there is a request for reimbursement, or an advanced escrow requested, or some funding mechanism for this work, that we don't have a disagreement over whether or not the consultant that's been retained and relied upon is either qualified or made reasonable charges that we're asked to pay for.
Right, well, that's my concern, is that at the end of, you know, when the third-party review comes in, and, you know, we're not going to have an argument about payment.
I'm certainly not anticipating one, and I know that a very good way to avoid that disagreement is to work cooperatively on the front end to create the RFP document, to make sure that both the applicant and the board members are comfortable that the chosen consultant has the proper qualifications. And frankly, to stay in communication as that work is being done, to make sure that things aren't headed sideways or generating charges that we don't think are relevant.
Okay.
Yeah, something to, I would say, work with Andre on. You know, we just want to be very, very open and very fair with this process.
Very good.
Certainly not to overcharge, as I think, because there are concerns there too, and we don't want to do that.
There was also another comment made as to adhering to some schedule and whether or not we had time to do certain things within some schedule. Our view is that quality is more important. We're interested in doing this right. We understand it's somewhat of a unique application, and we want to work with staff. If that means not being ready for a particular meeting, or pushing things off, as long as reasonable progress is being made, I think we'd be satisfied, we're heading in the right direction.
I think the bottom line will be, if this is done at the front end, it'll go faster through the rest of the process.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, my feeling, I, I want someone who's got a good handle in this area that I can work with, and I can learn something also from it, to help, help us out, and what, you know, and work with staff also.
The only other point I
I think we've got, it is a cooperative, I think the whole thing is a cooperative effort.
The only other point I'd make, Mr. Chairman, is that we have supplied Andre, and he can certainly disseminate to the board a roster of the consulting firms that have been working on behalf of the applicant, so that we can police conflicts as we're moving the RFP process forward.
Yes, okay, definitely, we don't want any conflicts or anything.
And I just have one comment too, we're really looking at establishing a long-term relationship then with a consulting firm, right? We're not looking for someone just to review the master plan, but to be with us through the entire process.
I would want that, because I wouldn't be happy until, you know, things are, I mean, we're happy, the town is happy. I think the town is what we've got to, got to work with, so. Work with us for the public hearings and
And I think continuity is key in that aspect, and, you know, and to, and to the fact that it is going to be a long-term relationship. I think to your point, Art, that we have, go through a formal bidding process. I think it's even more important if we're going to have that long-term relationship.
Yes. Just a thought, would the consultants that we're looking at for the town master plan, would they also have the expertise to look at this? Or are we talking apples and oranges?
Right now, we're talking apples and oranges for, for what we're looking for. I'm pretty sure there's some probably have this type of experience within their, within their resume, but right now, we're asking a totally different question.
Okay. Just looking at possibility of saving some money.
Similar premise, but different, different question.
Is the board comfortable with this direction?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, we'll, we'll proceed then. Request for proposals, Specks, and then request for proposals. Okay, further discussions with town staff. Anything else, Andre?
Nothing that jumps to mind right now. That was a bear discussion.
Anything, John?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, Cynthia?
No, thank you.
Board?
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to new plans, I would just like to add something. Maria and I, Maria Newman here and I, attended a planning board, a fundamentals of planning board class this past Saturday in Concord at the local government center. And we found it very informational, and we think that it should be training for basically anyone who comes on, on a planning board. It was, it was well done.
Very well done, yeah, very informative.
And one thing I, I did learn was that while, under 91A, I knew you obviously had to record minutes for these meetings, one thing I did not know was that under 91A, there is no requirement to actually approve those minutes. And let's just say the local government center was very impressed that on a regular basis, all our, all our boards approve meeting minutes as part of its procedure. And they rarely see that from most towns.
Yeah, that's, that's good, I think we go above and beyond what a lot of towns do or don't do. But then, as you find in the New Hampshire statutes, there's a lot of loopholes, and a lot of things that are hard to understand. It's all settled up in the legislature.
Yeah, they went over
Bargaining and compromising and
They, they went over a lot of scenarios, a lot of legal scenarios that have happened, and, you know, and it was, it was interesting to see what the outcomes of those were, and what you thought might be the outcome versus what the outcome actually was. It was, it was very good.
Yeah, and some of it's an eye-opener, I mean, because I went years ago, I think several times years ago. But like, in a statute, there's a nice preamble that pledges to also lots of lofty things, but you get into the meat of it, and it doesn't really, really, you know, support it. So, so don't ever read the preamble, you've got to really get into the, you know, the actual part of the statute, and then read the annotations, because that can change it, whether further legislation or court cases. So there's a lot of case lawers in this thing also, as you mean, the annotations.
They talked about that.
Could change the meaning of it completely. Okay, anything else? Because I just had two, two quick things. One, was it next, next week, we're going to review the impact fees for Litchfield, Mammoth, and everything?
Yes, we are.
Because maybe what I'm thinking of, maybe kind of put on a little primer for the board, because we've got some new people here, how we've put together impact fees, what entails and all that stuff. So kind of like a, like an overview.
All right, so next week, have a little overview of how impact fees are put together?
Yes, yeah.
Traffic impact fees or impact fees in general?
Probably impact fees in general, because I think that's where, where the questions are probably going to, going to come. But probably, traffic is probably the most critical, and we've, I know, done traffic import, impact fees for years. That was even before the, was it 67421 that came along?
Yeah.
And that actually had statutes on it, because before, there wasn't any enabling legislation. Or that gave us enabling legislation. But, but I guess there's money that we need to give back, so maybe start, you know, how, how it's formed, when it was formed, and, you know, some of the mechanics of it and everything to, to help us out, step us through it and everything. And then, oh, quickly, John, I got an email from John Varney, he had some questions, he sent to you, he said he needed answers in preparation for next week also, so.
Yeah, I got it.
So even though I got the email, I sent it to John, so it was only addressed to me, so it's, I didn't want to get stuck with anything, so you've got it. Okay, we're all set, we'll, Tom?
On, on the, I see the Varney thing's coming up next week. We had had some questions for the police, if I, did anybody ever ask them, or have they gone back to us?
We have contacted them, and asked them for, to give us some feedback to that. We'll have that next week.
Yeah, because I think your basic question, Tom, is with the improvements that was proposed, would we be better off with that versus doing nothing? That was kind of, I think, the base, the basic
And the other question, maybe staff can help us with next week, is, you know, I know you have 24 and 28 feet standard, standard roads, but do we have any roads less than that that have been approved, and kind of why they were approved? that that have been approved, and kind of why they were approved? If there were, if there were any? Because then, it seems to me, if there are exceptions to it, what's the reasons for the exception? And is that something that we have discretion, or is that just something that can't be?
So, I'd make sure I'm clear, is that based on the roadway standards that Land Derry has in its books, have we, have we allowed any road to be constructed? Are you talking about a new road constructed, that's less than standard?
Yeah, I don't know. How long are the 24 and 28 in the standard?
I know that, I think from 2000, about 2003 or 2004, we had the 24-foot standard, and then we adopted a 28-foot wide standard thereafter, and then only recently that we had dual standards of 24 and 28.
28, yeah. But since you've had them, have you had any roads that have been less than those two standards?
Not that I recall, but we'll, we'll look, but I don't believe the board has ever granted a waiver for a road less than a required requirement to person.
But it's something that the board can do, or is the board barred from doing?
No, I mean, the board has the ability to waive anything within its regulations, with good cause.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else on the board?
Just the ordinances you get hung up on, that's has to go to the ZVA.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing we can do about them. Okay, we'll proceed with our new plans. First one is Luigi Colte Jr. and Susan B. Colte, Tax Map 15, Lot 97. This is a application acceptance in a public hearing for a two-lot subdivision for Heritage Truck and Automotive. 52 Clark Road is Zone Industrial 1. First thing we have to do is accept the application as complete, and then we can proceed with the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there is one outstanding checklist item that's associated with this, excuse me, yeah, that's associated with a waiver is being requested. Assuming the board grants a waiver, staff recommends the application be accepted as a complete, and I just will review the waiver requests. The applicant is requesting a waiver to Section 305 of the regulations. The applicant has not provided utility clearance letters because there are no planned improvements associated with the two-lot subdivision at this time. They have, however, submitted a clearance letter from Majorate Water Works to confirm the water source. Staff recommends granting the waiver because the coordination of the utility services will be required for site development as part of the site plan approval in the future. So again, as, as, as long as the board grants the waiver, it would be accepted as complete.
Do you want to grant the waiver first?
Yes, yeah, we have to, to make it complete.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, will we grant the applicant's request for a waiver based on the staff's recommendation, and the applicant's letter dated October 14, 2011?
I have a motion by Dana, a second by Rick, for granting the waiver, as presented by staff. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, chair votes affirmative, and the waiver is granted, and that will, I think the application is complete.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, will we accept the applicant's application as complete?
Motion by Dana, second by Rick, for completeness of the application. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, chair votes affirmative. The application has been accepted as complete. We can start the public hearing, and there is a 65-day window in which we have to render a decision on this subdivision plan. And Todd, just identify yourself for our records, please, and we'll proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Todd Connors from Long Beach Development. I'm here tonight representing Heritage Truck and Automotive. I have in the audience with me Harold Little, who is the owner and operator of Heritage Truck and Automotive. This project is proposed on 52 Clark Road, which is a 8.5-acre parcel of land. It has dual frontage, it has a small frontage on Clark Road that act, that provides access for the existing single-family house on the property. The parcel also has quite a bit of frontage on Jack's Bridge Road, which most of you know is an industrial-type road. It accesses, it provides access to Coke Bottling Plant, Harvey Industries, Penske Truck. My client has entered into an agreement with the Colte family to purchase the land. We had come to you sometime last summer with a conceptual plan, and we also sought your advice on rezoning the parcel. If you recall, last summer, this parcel was zoned AR1 because of the house that exists on it. With your recommendation, the town council did vote to rezone the parcel I1. We then proceeded to the zoning board of adjustment, and we were granted a variance for the specific I2 use that Heritage Truck and Automotive would like to construct out here. Since that time, we've done a little bit of work on the site plan. However, we have a purchase and sale agreement, and we would like to complete the purchase of the property. So, the decision was made to move forward with the subdivision part of the project, and let the site plan come along a little bit later. So, we're here tonight. The, the plan in front of you is to carve the lot into two parcels. The pork chop on the southerly side would be carved off. It's about 2.9 acres. The remainder piece, which would have both frontages on Clark and Jack's Bridge, is, I think, 5.6 acres. We've dug test pits on both lots, we've done his soils, we've had a wetland scientist out there. Our application included lot sizing calculations in accordance with your regulations, and both lots, to the best of my knowledge, meet the zoning requirements for the I1 zone. At this time, there are no improvements proposed for the property. I say at this time, at the time of subdivision. We don't intend to make any road improvements, utility improvements, or otherwise, until we move forward with our site plan. We have, as part of our plan submittal, drawn some conceptual hypothetical driveway locations and check site distance, so that we could assure you that both new lots would have points of access on Jack's Bridge Road with proper site distance. I also submitted a brief letter with respect to the drainage and the traffic. As you can certainly understand, with no proposed improvements, there's really no drainage impact and no traffic impact. We expect that we will address both of those issues in a lot more detail, once our site plan application is submitted to the board. Mr. Chairman, I don't have a whole lot more to add. This is a fairly straightforward application, so I'm happy to move on to any questions or staff review.
Okay, we'll go to staff, go to the board, then go to the public, and then we'll wrap it up. So, John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll go through the application review items. Item number one, we recommend the applicant update the plans to indicate the proposed monuments at all anchor points of the subject property along Jack's Bridge Road, in accordance with the regulations. Item two, we recommend the applicant update the plans to indicate the pavement width and right-of-way width for Clark Road, and also update the planned title blocks to include Clark Road. Item three, we recommend the applicant provide the owner's signature on all applicable plans. Item four, plans note the existing easement across the subject property is to be extinguished. We're requesting that they provide copies of the executed deeds for the easement-extinguishment for the planning department, division's file, and also to update the note on, note 17 on Sheet 1 accordingly, and note the block, book and page of the easement-extinguishment deeds on the plans. Item five, we recommend the applicant obtain the NHDS subdivision approval for the project, provide a copy of the approval for the, to the planning division, and indicate the approval number on plans. We're also requesting that they update Sheet, excuse me, Note 6, to indicate the correct FEMA map number, and also state the proposed use of the new vacant Lot 97-1, and note the number of bedrooms for Lot 97 in Note 8. Item six, we recommend the applicant update Sheet 4 to indicate the B profile for the existing driveway site distance on Clark Road, per Exhibit D2 of the regs. Item seven, portions of the indicated right-of-way along Clark Road are less than 25 feet from the centerline of the existing pavement. Town typically requests a minimum 25 feet to be provided along existing roads for further widening. We recommend the applicant arrange a meeting with the Department of Public Works to discuss any additional offsite improvements that may be necessary under this project. Item eight, as Todd indicated, they has provided a letter regarding the drainage. We're recommending that the letter be updated to include the New Hampshire PE stamp and signature for the town's files. And lastly, item number nine, is to update the lot density calculation information to properly note lots 97 and 97-1 versus 79 for the town's files. That's all we had. Again, staff does recommend conditional approval of this plan. Those were the only comments that we really had at this time. Thank you.
Cynthia?
I have nothing more to add.
Okay, Andre?
I have nothing more to add.
Okay, I'll start this end of the board with Chris will go through.
So, obviously, from one of the subdivisions, the only frontage is going to be Jack's Bridge. For the other piece, is the intent ultimately for that to be, with its industrial rezoning, to be coming in and out of Jack's Bridge and not onto Clark's, right?
That is correct. Our intention by rezoning the entire parcel to I1 was to do two site plans, industrial site plans, and both would have access to Jack's Bridge.
Yeah.
We understand that Clark is primarily a residential road, and there should be no access there.
Yeah, there's not up to any kind of heavy traffic.
Yep, absolutely. I've been there.
All right.
All set?
I'm all set.
Dana?
All set.
Mary?
I'm all set.
Does the house have to come down, if you were to develop that as an industrial piece of property?
I'm not sure that's a yes or no answer, to be honest. I would say on its face, residential unit in the industrial zone isn't really what the ordinance intends. However, we don't have a use for that property at this point. Our site plan will be on the smaller, the new lot, 97-1. So, the house would, would remain as long as we haven't proposed any further development. I could, I could see an instance where a project is proposed, and they require 24/7, round-the-clock caretaker supervision, and that site plan, they may want to try and get that in. I don't know if that would require variance, it very well might. So, I would say there, there's possibilities that it would stay. It's, it's not where we're headed necessarily, but it could.
And I think, just kind of talk to Chris's point, is the thought process, when that lot is developed, it would be Jack's Bridge Road as the address and not Clark Road?
That's, that is what we expect and intend. Our application includes a site distance profile for that lot onto Jack's Bridge, so that we've documented at this stage of the game that there is sufficient safe site distance on Jack's Bridge, so that there won't be any reason to argue against it in the future.
Thanks, I'm all set.
Laura?
Is there a house in a barn or something? It looks like it's just two structures.
Yes, there's two structures. The house is the one that's closer to Clark Road, and there's a barn in the back.
Okay, and the road that goes around is some sort of a track, it has nothing to do with your eventual plan?
It's like a Jeep trail, that's out there now, yes.
All right, I'm all set, thanks, Eric.
Please do.
No question.
Maria?
No.
John? Are any of us to this two-lot subdivision, or anyone from the public, has any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay, Andre is a member of the public.
That's right, that's what I'll say out there.
Yeah, all set with the public. No one has any information for us, so, okay, Andre?
Just a quick note, Mr. Chairman, I just want to continue to encourage the owner of Heritage, right, to keep on going, that you're getting closer and closer, and I appreciate your looking to expand on Land Derry. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, Dana?
Make a motion, we conditionally approve the site plan for...
Subdivision.
Subdivision of Tax Map 15, Lot 97, with the following precedent conditions, and subsequent general and subsequent conditions outlined in the staff letter dated November 2, 2011.
Second.
I have a motion for conditional approval, and a second by Rick. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, here votes affirmative, and the two-lot subdivision is conditionally approved.
Thank you very much for your help tonight, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I don't have a, I don't have a spare talk. Yeah, you'll give it your nose and decision.
Okay, great, thanks, guys.
Okay. Next, we have Mark Investments Incorporated, Tax Map 28, Lot 18-6. This is an application acceptance in a public hearing for a two-phase site plan amendment to add silos, mechanical equipment pads, loading bays, a dock well, a dockwell, oh, and associated site plan improvements for Shelburne Plastics, 27 Industrial Drive, and this is Zone Gately Business District.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there are no outstanding checklist items. Staff recommends the application be accepted as complete.
Okay.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion completed by Dana, second by Rick. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Sentences, here votes affirmative, and the application has been accepted as complete, and we'll start the public hearing, and just identify yourself for our records, please.
Yep, I'm Mike O'Donnell from TF Moran. I'm presenting Tax Map 28, Lot 18-6. This is 27 Industrial Drive. This was formerly the DHL Building, before that, the Airborne Express Building. Across the street is Kluber Lubrication, and the airport runway is off to the east. On January 26, 2011, the planning board voted to allow change of use application for this parcel to be processed administratively. That work was done. That was to change the use from a distribution warehouse to make the site a manufacturing facility, and Shelburne Plastics now occupies that facility. They manufacture plastic bottles there. So, tonight, we're here for the approval of a minor site plan. This will allow Shelburne Plastics to make exterior improvements to the site, and those improvements are expected to enable their operation to function more efficiently. Specifically, the improvements include installation of three 15-foot diameter, 24-foot tall silos near the northwest corner of the building, installation of mechanical equipment near the northeast corner of the building, approximately 3,000 square foot of additional pavement, and that will help improve truck circulation around the building, some restriping to delineate truck spaces and loading spaces, an installation of a second dock well next to the one that's already there, which will add four additional loading doors, some minor stormwater improvements to increase the capacity of the existing detention basin, which will account for the additional impervious area that's being added, and some landscaping improvements, which we're now proposing through some discussion with staff to help screen the silos. And that would be eight evergreen trees that would grow to a similar height of, of the silos. The total number of parking spaces is being reduced from 104 for the DHL Building to 33 for Shelburne Plastics. The town's ordinance requires 20 spaces, so we have 13 additional spaces. Number of truck spaces is being increased from four to 22. Shelburne Plastics has confirmed that this is sufficient to meet their needs. No changes to the site in terms of utilities. It is, you know, supplied by town water and sewer, and PS&amp;H for the electric, and those utilities are all going to remain as they are. There's no additional lighting proposed as part of this. Any signage that they put up will comply with the town's regulations. And there is also one waiver for this from Section 4.01(c), to allow plan scale of 1 inch equals 50 feet, and that's just so that the plan is consistent with all the plans that we've previously prepared for this lot from back when we did the Airborne Express Building. So, that's, concludes the presentation. If there's any questions, I can take them.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with John.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll go through the, as Mike indicated, the, they are asking one waiver. The applicant's requesting a waiver to Section 4.01(c) of the Reg regulations. Applicant has provided planes at a scale of 1 inch equals 50, where 1 inch equals 40 is required by the regs. Staff recommends granting the waiver, as there are plans on file for the parcel that are at a scale of 1 inch equals 50, and sufficient detail is provided at that scale. As far as comments to the plans, item number one, the applicant shall provide an updated Federal Aviation Administration permit, and note the approval number on Sheet 1. Item two, the applicant shall provide a pavement marking detail in the plan set. Item three, should note waivers if the board so decides to grant the waiver. Item four, the applicant shall revise the planning board signature block to add four-phase language. The applicant should also add the planning board signature block with the phasing language to the cover sheet. Item five, the applicant shall provide additional landscaping between Industrial Drive and the proposed silo location for screening. Item six, applicant shall revise the plan purpose note 2 on the site layout sheet for six to show the three... for six to show that three silos are proposed. Item seven is again providing a electronic copy of the complete plan set. Item eight is financial guarantee if necessary and lastly, the final engineering review. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Anything, Cynthia?
The only other thing, actually two things that we have are to show you that where the landscaping will occur. Which is in the location of the silos, Industrial Drive is, I think you can see in that location. They're proposing to infill with some additional landscaping because they already have arborvitae near the entrance to kind of wrap around the, where the silos will be located and then additional landscaping here to kind of screen that. We do have some photos to show that. Here is the existing vegetation that I spoke of. The silos will be in approximately this location. This is the view from Industrial Drive looking towards where the silos will be. So there'd be vegetation in this location and then a little bit further down, there'd be additional vegetation about here. So it will soften the effect of that, of those three silos. The building itself is an industrial building. It looks like it will function and on that end, there will be three approximately twenty-four foot tall steel or aluminum silos to hold the product that ultimately make their containers for yogurt. So that's what we have. Thank you.
Okay, Andre?
No additional issues.
Okay, I'll start this end of the board with John.
Nothing.
All set. Maria?
I'm all set.
Letha?
Yeah, I have a question. The silos, you mentioned twenty-four feet and I saw the building height of twenty-three feet, is that, are the-
From the ground.
-intended to be taller than the building itself?
They'll be slightly taller than the building.
Oh, okay. I was just curious. That's it. Did you say they make yogurt containers?
That's my understanding.
These diet set bottles, it doesn't have anything to do with Stonyfield, do they co, do they do anything together?
They are in business, they're separate entities, but Stonyfield does have a contract with them to supply plastic bottles for, for their food products.
That's interesting, I never knew that. Nice to have it all in town. It's great.
Five more Stonyfield now.
Is there any intention of the silos painted to match the building?
I did mention that to them. They said that the paints that they make for these silos are neutral colors. How well they can match the building, they're not sure.
Mr. Chairman, I noted that the building on that side is approximately the same color as what these silos are going to be. Sort of a silvery gray galvanized look, so.
So as much as they can blend in, they will.
Naturally.
The silos at their existing facility in Manchester are white, but they said that they, they do come in neutral colors, so.
I'm all set. Okay.
I was thinking that you should make them red like a barn and, and put a Coppola on top of the plant and then we'd be all set, but.
How long have you been out with electricity?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you for coming into the town, we appreciate it.
Dana?
Nothing.
No. Rick?
I know this is a scenic byway through there. Any reason why the silos need to be, engineering concern that need to be at the front rather than at the back of the building?
It has to do with the way that they function inside the building. Basically, the, the raw product is these plastic pellets that are loaded into the silos. They come in at, at one end of, of the facility and at the other end is where they load their trucks. So if we put the silos in the back, then the trucks would be in the front.
Fair enough.
Actually, I did have a question about the pavement. If you're, if you're working with Stonyfield, they did that impervious pavement. I'm wondering, do you have any plans to use that type since you have to add pavement to the area now?
No, it's, it's about three thousand square feet. It's, it's just going to match in with what's there now. It's basically so trucks can swing a little bit better than they do now. They're going to have more tractor trailers back there than, than Airborne Express ever did and, you know, while it may have been easy for Airborne Express to swing a tractor trailer around those, you know, passenger car sized vans that they use, for these guys to swing a tractor trailer around another tractor trailer, they're going to require a little bit more space. And it is on the plan, right there in the, in the gray shade. You can see it, it just opens up that radius a little bit and you can see where that number one is in the circle. There may be times when the pellet truck is offloading pellets and another tractor trailer needs to get passed. And likewise, up above that, you can see there's six parking spaces for tractor trailers and, you know, another one might come through and those are parked there and need to get around it. So that's really the, the limit of the, of the additional pavement.
Of course, pavement also that they have at Stonyfield is in a park, is in a car park, in a car parking lot. It's not, it's not used in a application like this where you're going to have such large wheel loads and turning movements. Would not be recommended.
Thank you.
And on the landscaping, is purple lilacs included in there?
No, it's, it's, it's all a very basic arborvitae to provide some sort of screening, something relatively hardy that's going to, it gets kind of windy over there, so we don't have a lot of options. And something that doesn't get too tall so that it's in the way of the flight path.
Yeah, understandable. Are any butters to this amendment, amended site plan? Any, anyone from the public have any questions, comments or concern? This includes the press also.
Yeah, but neither of them live in London Dairy.
Okay, seeing none, seeing no public input, I'll bring it back to the board and-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant the applicant's request for a waiver based on staff's recommendation and the applicant's letter dated October fourteenth, two thousand and eleven.
Second.
Okay, motion by Dana, second by Rick for granting the waiver. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Sentences, she votes affirmative and the waiver is granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant conditional approval for Markhill Investments, Tax Map twenty-eight, Lot eighteen dash six for a amended site plan. Based on staff's recommendation and the precedent conditions and general and subsequent conditions outlined in the November second, two thousand and eleven letter from staff.
Motion by Dana, second by Rick for conditional approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Sentences, she votes affirmative and the plan is conditionally approved.
Thank you.
Just those yogurt cups. Okay, any other business to pick up before the board tonight?
I just wanted to let the board know that in doing my due diligence as the alternate member on the hearing plan.
Yes.
I'm directing the, the video of it, so I'm in the booth. So, and I, and I've, I've avoided playing God and doing the thing to, to give my opinion, although.
It's control.
Right, really. But I do, you know, believe you're doing a fabulous job. It's well done, the meetings are well done.
It's my pleasure.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, second by Dana. All those in favor adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.